The best talk. The views and opinions expressed on the following program do not necessarily reflect that of radio station V L T, Clear Communications Incorporated, its staff and management, or our sponsors. W V L T, Clear Communications Incorporated retains the right to record all phone calls received during this program for future promotions.
Good evening, everyone. How you doing? This is Robert McQuaid with Dave Summers, my co-candidate for Millville City Commission. This show is being paid for by David Summers and Robert McQuaid for Millville City Commission. Tonight's show is going to be interesting. We're going to have Steve Solak is on our show tonight. He's going to be interviewing Mr. Dave Summers for his commission candidacy. So I introduce some of the people that sponsor us with our signs. Business-wise, I will hand it over to Mr. Solak. I'd like to have a thank you out for Full Potato and also Soul of the Sea and Quick... Sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. Again, thanks out for Soul of the Sea who sponsored us and also for Full Potato on High Street across from Bojo's. And we also have the Millville Market who is across the street from Riggins on Route 49, 47, and also Crown Chicken on Second Street on the Quick Fill Gas Station. They are directly down the street from City Liquor. They have also sponsored us. So I'd like to take this opportunity to allow everyone to call in if you have any questions at 609... Sorry, 856-696-0092. Cruising 92. So I'd like to introduce Steve Solak. Steve Solak is coming on now.
What's up, Dave?
Yep, I was listening to your program. I called, actually called him and let him know that you were on there.
You mean when you were listening to Romanek and me just now?
Oh, yeah.
Who'd you call?
Called him and told him to get on the radio, no, listen to, turn the radio on.
Oh, right, to know that Romanek was being interviewed. That was a nice step forward for me and my project, having a mayor on.
Yes.
How fancy.
I think that was pretty good for a thing.
Yeah, you liked that one? It was a good one?
Yeah, I thought it was good.
Yeah, I was listening to you on the way in, Steve.
Sorry?
I was listening to you on the way in.
Yeah, what did you think?
I thought it was very good, very interesting.
Okay, cool.
You get to the point. I think more voters should take the opportunity to look at your webpage, inform the vote. I see the signs up all over, so I'm hoping they take any opportunity to look at that.
And hopefully they can navigate the site despite my poor web design choices.
I don't know.
Don't get me started on that. Anyway.
Well, Steve, I got a little more. Folks, I forgot to mention Paradise Pizza also was one of our sponsors. They're on 49 and near the bridges being constructed. If you have problems getting your orders from them, just call your DoorDash, Uber, or Grubhub, and I'm sure they'll be able to navigate around that traffic disaster there.
Cool. All right, Dave, so I think a couple weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, we did a short interview here.
Yes.
Where we covered a little bit of your background. So I don't want to go too far into that, but just as like a warm-up, do you want to talk briefly about your background and your experience?
Yes. I didn't get into details of what I did there, stuff like that, what my past has been with them. And prior to that, I knew about the Dunkin' Donuts thing. I was a baker at Dunkin' Donuts. And then I went into Wheaton's as far as packing house too. And of course, I went up in there and several different... Finally got to a CNC programmer, supervisor. That's where I am now. But yeah, I did cover stuff in there like my current job is now. Is I, I mean, before, a couple of years ago, I was handling MSDSs.
What's an MSDS?
It's for like product information, you know, the stuff like fire hazard or what each one of your products in your shop. Because we're ISO certified, so that means they come in to do an inspection on your blinks every six months or so.
And so what, you're in charge of putting up the labels?
Yes, I was, as far as at one point was doing that and doing everything with that, plus doing my job also. You know, with programming machines, which is G codes. It tells your machines how to move, where to move, and use certain tooling for making certain metal.
So you're familiar with some programming?
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what language you're using or what it is.
G code, and we're using Techsoft.
Yeah.
And the other one's Bobcat.
Well, when you're doing the programming, I'm sure you know, but for our listeners out there, you really have to like look at how things are designed. And if you, one thing is out of place, the whole, the whole design falls apart and all that kind of stuff. So yeah, that's a systems outlook is what I would say. Now, I haven't looked at your code.
Right.
To know exactly how whatever it is you're doing works, but would you say that's a fair assessment?
Yes. And there are Haas machines we have right now. Have you ever heard of a Haas?
No.
That's what they got.
What's that?
The make of the machine itself, the CNCs that we're using. And then we do have an Atachi safety and a Hardidge, which was made in Elmoora, New York.
Okay, so that sounds like a bunch of fancy equipment.
Oh, yeah. The one machine, about a quarter million dollars for the Hardidge.
You know what's making me think of? I almost got hired to program virtual reality simulations for people working on that type of equipment. So the idea was to have them practice on the simulation before they actually mess with the expensive equipment.
Yeah, you see the eyes there.
And they break something or, you know, hurt themselves trying to do that.
They have simulation mode in the software that I have.
Oh, they have it already?
Yes, it shows animated thing of what it's going to do. Yes.
So you don't deal with that part of it, though?
Yeah, I have it in mine.
Oh, do you? Really?
I should have brought something like that to show you.
Well, yeah, maybe if we do that walkthrough, maybe you'll be able to show some.
Well, I talked to my boss today and maybe after election because of the reason is it's, they can't be, how would you say, prioritized to any party.
They don't want favoritism or anything.
Yes.
So for the people listening, Dave and I were talking about doing a walkthrough of NIPRO, but obviously, as we just explained, for political reasons, it might be better to do that after the election.
After the election, it won't be a problem.
So then also, aside from programming the fancy expensive equipment, you're also a supervisor?
Yes.
So you want to just talk briefly about?
Okay, I go over and assist with setups or meaning that if they have a problem with the programs, you know, you can make a hiccup in anything that's there and tooling. Because each thing takes a different tool, whether it's a tap, grooving tool, fly cutter. I mean, you've got to, when you look over to print, you've got to look over that job to see what it's going to need. And you have the material cut for it. We have a guy that cuts it for us. And we look over to see what we need cut and how much we need it over to a land so it doesn't, has room to clean up with your machining tools that you're using. So when you go over there to have them, you get them to cut it up, you bring it over here and it's job planning. Some stuff on the second op, you may need a fixture. So I come up in my, my software and I draw up like a fixture on how it's going to fit on there.
Okay.
So that way I don't run into the fixture or anything and it gives me clearances. So it's like job planning to... And you got to make kind of like, I had one that was called a rocker that used for tube draw. And it was made to like move glass tubing.
Okay.
And it's called a curve conveyor. It goes around a curve, actually, what it says it is.
Sure.
And it picks up the glass tubing and turns around and moves it, moves it down the area, but it actually flips back and releases. And what we do where we were at, we were making the parts for it. And of course, when I make the second half of that, I turn around, I got to give it away where it's going to hold on to it, then it's not going to hit something else. And it has clearances for all the tools, which is five axes, meaning that the table will turn this way, then it could turn this way or that way. And then you get a machine and stuff inside.
Sure. So then, let's relate that back to supervision. So are you like explaining all of that to the people under you? Okay, so you have to explain some of this quite complicated processes. And, you know, sometimes, not to get overly nitpicky, but when you hear the term supervisor, you could be supervising anything, right?
Right.
Supervising kids on the playground, you could be supervising military people, but you're supervising on what sounds like fairly high-tech stuff, which is a whole other level there.
Yes. And the company I work there for too, we make parts for the machines. They're proprietary, which are pharmaceutical vial machines. A lot of other companies out there buy them from overseas. We have bought a few European machines, but mostly the ones we make for ourselves.
Okay.
That all started through George Strohmner.
Okay.
You know, he used to be the big boss over there. He's the one, if you had Silver Run, remember seeing that place out there with the ship? And I think now it's a place for, what do they call that? For people to visit at and stuff. But he passed away.
Like a visitor's center?
Yeah, well, it's kind of, you'll see him. Remember this place back there? We have Strohmners on the side of that, where they, people go back there and they let them to go back to the river and stuff now. It belongs to, what the heck is that called back there?
I can't remember what it is, actually.
Yeah.
Does that have to do with like nature trails and stuff like that?
Yes, that's it, yeah.
Oh, well, it's the Fish and Game, Fish and Game area. Yes, okay, I know what you're talking about.
You've seen that whole place all back in there. He's the one originally started all that. And he turned around and got the, started out our division, which was called M B A, Millville Vial and Ampel.
Okay.
And that was originally out on Sharp Street, near where Amcor is now. We were right on the side of that.
Okay.
And NIPRO came along and bought this place from Amcor, in which we moved out to the Millville Airport.
Okay, cool.
So, and how he started that was, is he bought the rights from a French company and then they built on that. They have bigger machines, started out with a 16, now it's about a 32. And they can use different sized chucks for different sized vials, like large vials, small vials, stuff like that. So it depends on the machine.
And you make all the parts for all the machinery there. One facility there.
We make new machinery there, too.
Yes, interesting.
All right, so then let's move on to a little bit of your agenda items. So the first thing that we talked about was city cleanliness.
Yes.
And so it seems like there are some particular areas that you're thinking of to clean up. Can you talk about that a bit?
Yeah. Okay, where did we hit? Where did I write up here? I got it on here. Oh, man, okay. This is what you said to call it. Okay, you jumped over from the other one. You told me this is off the one it is.
Oh, yeah, he's got notes down here. He had keynotes that he wanted to use in these.
Okay. I'm going to find out where that is. As far as cleaning, then, okay, how about the road area where it's buckling at, where the, where the, what's that, water line has been leaking under the road?
Oh, wait, where's that?
City Hall, our, the post office.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a leakage area there. As far as getting that repaired and, but it seems like to me, I listened to what Romanek was saying. He'd rather we do that whole place anyhow, right?
Right.
By what he was saying, by what I thought.
And it might also relate to what he was just saying, that you can have some ideas of what you might want to do before you get in, but then once you get in and you see what's happening, you may or may not be able to actually implement.
Right, it depends on other commissioners' vote and what everybody agrees upon. I mean, like I said, from working from the inside, you know a little more what's going on. Like I just haven't ever hear what was going on.
Well, you said you'd work a lot with code, not code enforcement, but the engineering department.
Yes.
That's where most of the grants and everything.
So then, what did you have next on your list of things that you wanted to mention?
Okay, I wanted to, are you talking about here? Okay, one of the things I wanted to do over there, I mean, I did check into the homeless shelter thing.
Okay, yeah, we talked a little bit about that on the Man on the Street interview.
Yeah, it's a big issue that is in the town. People, I'll tell you, when we were out at the brewery that you had the event at.
Yeah.
We had a lot of people come out there to ask us about mainly the homeless people and panhandlers. Now, there was an ordinance when I used to be a part-time officer, we used to ticket them. And they would go to court and then if they had continued to panhandle, there would be jail sentence and stuff like that, but.
So Dave, what are your ideas with?
My ideas, I wanted to, of course, before you go make a judgment, you got to check the situation out. Where do they have to go? And some of your homeless are mental patients.
What do you mean, where do they have to go?
I mean, as far as like shelters, there's several different places that'll help them out. The place down by where the 4H Fair Place was, what's that place I was telling you? I had it written down, but I lost that paper.
You mean the county 4H?
Yes.
Out?
Or just before that.
Kind of Nabav, but on the other side of Morgan, I think that is.
Yeah, I lost my paper that night. When I had that, I wrote a bunch of stuff on that.
But the ordinary shelter you were talking about, you had all that?
Yes, but it wasn't a regular homeless shelter. It was, it's run by the county. And, and it was, I turned around and, there it is, Cumberland County Guidance Center.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
What do you know about that?
By what I've been checking over, you know, I first should tell you, my wife was a, a mental health nurse at Bridgeton Hospital, Second Ward.
Sure.
So she has a little idea because some come in there. So, yeah. And I asked her about it. She said there is some sent out to this and they do give them, what do they call that? Things for the bus to get them there?
What, some type of voucher to get on the bus? And they send them out to the guidance center?
Yes.
So I, this is reminding me of when we did the Man on the Street interview, I think at the car show. You're saying sometimes people in that position just don't know that they can get those kinds of vouchers, right? So you want to talk a little bit about what your idea to help with that?
To me, I would turn around and probably go for, like you were saying, like get the vouchers and then have a way of them getting vouchers. I had all this written down. Sorry.
Churches and organizations.
Right. But anyway, yeah. I have all this. Let me just try to draw something. Give example. Okay, retention. Okay. Well, anyway, I had an idea first. I want to check all this out, meaning I want to go to each one of these places I was talking about. Bridgeton Hospital, where the mental things, I can find that out some through my wife, because she's an RN there.
Right, so you have a...
And social services, because there's different parts of that also that you can, and then get it all together and then come back and give you. Because I know one of them will set you up. What's that place in Bond and every inspection place in that?
You mean the motor vehicle inspection?
It's not motor vehicle, it's in that complex area there. There's a place in there also that actually will set you up at a home.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have been going on their website, but it looks like I left paperwork out in the truck. Anyhow.
So the basic idea you have is to try and educate the people in that position to know that there are services available to them so that they can better use them and hopefully get back on the right path?
Yes, get them back through either living a regular life, you know, a normal life, and then turn around and get them where they have a place to go and know how to go about it.
Sure.
Put it up somewhere on social media. So that way, way there, they have a place to take it from.
Cool. Is there another top item, topic you want to talk about, or you want me to throw out one of these like fair trash policy?
Yeah, I come to find out about that. I did go over someone over that, a past commissioner.
Now, could you introduce what you mean by a fair trash policy?
Right now, they're saying, he's telling me, by, they want to turn around.
Hey, Steve, we're going to go to a commercial break. We have a commercial break and give ourselves here some time to gather thoughts. And folks, we'll be right back after a commercial break.
Yeah, it's not following the sequence.
Hi, I'm Bill Von Sosco from The Racing Line on W V L T 92.1 FM every Tuesday night, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
We'll take your calls. So listen in Tuesday night at 7:00 PM, The Racing Line on W V L T 92.1, The Cruisin' Good Guys.
Four generations of Monero's customers can't be wrong. That's right. Monero's Appliances in Vineland have been serving the South Jersey area for generations since 1908. Ask your friends, ask your family. Chances are, they are Monero customers too, because Monero's Appliances still offer the best deals on appliances with expert delivery and installation. 12 months, no interest financing, and 3.5% sales tax. It's a great time to upgrade your kitchen and get a $2,000 rebate with select appliance packages. Monero's has 60 washers and dryers, 65 refrigerators and freezers on display at all times. Plus, Monero's has thousands of appliances and vacuum parts for all brands in stock, and they change watch and car fob batteries while you wait. That's Monero's Appliances, 1888 South Delcy Drive in Vineland, open Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Phone 856-692-7900, or the web at moneros.com.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Steve Resner, your South Jersey dentist for well now 43 years. At a time when most of the dentists I started with have retired, I'm still right here in Vineland and Bridgeton doing what I do. Well, why is that? You know, sometimes you're blessed to love your job, and that's exactly what my career has been. A love affair. Still love meeting the fine folks each week who choose to try out my super talented team. Still love learning. Still love giving you a totally new experience of what dentistry can be and should be. A pain-free, spot-like experience where you feel that you're our most valued patient, our only patient, because at that moment, you are. I've been fortunate to have been trained by world-class legends in dentistry, and I bring that experience to your care. The latest trend that has our phones blown up is a concept of teeth in a day. A beautiful new smile in one visit, no matter how debilitated your mouth might be. If that sounds inviting, call Michelle at 856-692-1370. 856-692-1370.
It's time for you to come to Branson, Missouri for the trip of a lifetime, located right in the middle of the country. You can drive or fly there. We put together a deal of a lifetime for you to experience Branson. Right now, you can get a three-day, two-night package for only $79 total. We're even including four free Branson show tickets. Call the special Branson hotline number right now to learn more. 800-360-0597. 800-360-0597. If you've never been to Branson, Missouri, come visit and see what we have to offer. Beautiful lakes, casual and upscale restaurants, tons of shows and activities for everyone. And for $79 total, you can't beat it. So pick up your phone right now and call the Branson Travel Hotline. Claim your three-day, two-night package plus four free show tickets for only $79 total. Call now. 800-360-0597. That's 800-360-0597.
All right, we're back. And so we were talking about the fair trash policy. Can you help explain what that's about and what your ideas about it are?
Okay, in the long run, what Commissioner did as help taxpayers, so money, the 240 dollar a new revenue stream, and the lawsuit was to be responsible for picking up trash from hotels and apartment houses. The cost of the, that would have been greater for each taxpayer than the 240 now. So the hotel and apartment complexes are paying for their own trash. What done, what Commissioner's done stopped the charge that the city would have been responsible for. You mentioned the, okay, a glass sign that people, you know, tells people information on hours and give telephone numbers.
So, right, so that's helping residents navigate City Hall.
Yes.
So.
Outside building.
Right, so are you trying to say that sometimes people don't know how to work the services in government? Is that what you mean by that?
Yeah, that and as far as not everybody carries around a phone. So that's why signs on the outside sometimes is just as good too.
Oh, so you're saying.
While actually doing that.
A lot of people are defaulting to everything being online and on their phone.
Yes.
But not everybody uses that.
Uh-uh, no, they do not.
Right, so you're saying you need to refocus on making sure there's proper physical signage?
Right, like backlitted signs or maybe covered over with glass.
Okay, cool. And then back when we were talking with the Man on the Street type stuff and just like this navigating City Hall or navigating the homeless situation, it seems like one of your ideas is to create a better liaison system.
Yes, and that's why I went through the four places to try and go over there and look to see what they had, what their services was, to see how they work together.
So what four places were there?
There was that one, it was called Cumberland County Guidance Center.
Okay.
And the homeless shelter on, was that up there near Union Road? And Bridgeton Hospital.
Okay, so, right, so this is starting to come together for me. So you're basically saying that people are having trouble knowing what the services are and how to navigate government. And so you went to these four different places, Cumberland County Guidance Center, the homeless shelter, and a couple other places to figure out firsthand what's going on, what's the information that you could convey to the people. Now, would you set up some kind of like liaison department, or would you hire somebody specific? What would that look like?
I would think either, yeah, that would probably be better to do that, talking over other commissioners, because that's something that you can't just do by yourself. That's going to have to be run through your other fellow commissioners.
Right, so you're saying that's an overall agenda item, and you don't know exactly what it would look like if you were to get elected, but you will certainly make it a priority to talk over.
Right.
With the other commissioners and try to implement some type of networking and coordination to help make sure the citizens actually know what's available.
Yeah, because some of this stuff, they have different names, but they really don't, if you look it up on the web, and they're pretty much relative to each other, meaning that they all basically the same thing. One sends one to the other, one sends the other, and then, and they're all basically into mental health altogether. And then some of them are, like the one in Vineland here, like I said, off of that area where the, on the actual DMVs at, there was a place in that area that actually did have a social services, right, yeah.
Cool. And so then, going back to the streets and roads, could you talk about which streets and roads need attention and how you plan to address them?
Yeah, the streets itself, I would turn around and, I don't know yet, streets need to be worked on based on need. I'm sure that they have a plan in place. And address more immediate needs. The city needs to be prepared and be shovel-ready when grant money is released and ready to accept them.
So basically, you're saying you recognize the problem that streets and roads need to be cleaned up.
Right.
And you don't have a particular list in mind of what you're going to address, but you have faith that the city already has a list of roads that need to be addressed? Are you saying you're going to make sure?
It looks like they're going to do the main one in there by what I heard Romanek saying.
Yeah, Engineering always has a list of roads that have to be done. And if he was to get elected this term, there's already roads and sidewalks that are irrigated already for grants to have those roads and stuff fixed. So Dave would be in the process of helping to move those new roads forward in the engineering. But Engineering goes out... But Engineering goes out and they kind of come back to the Commission and let them know what roads are necessary to be fixed and which ones aren't at the time.
Wouldn't that just be default for any Commissioner though?
Any Commission, yeah.
Yes.
So would that mean like you're looking maybe to be the particular Commissioner that handles that department?
I would like that one, or the one for parks, because I am familiar with tractors. I've owned them for quite some time, and I know the different attachments that work with them and what's, you know, just to say, they do their stuff. I'll never override anyone else. But if I have a good idea to help them out, I'll give suggestions.
Okay.
David has Engineering degrees too.
Right.
I don't know if he told you that or not.
Uh, he probably did in the first interview that we did like a month ago. So then, let's see. What else have we got here? Ah, I like this one. The radio show, sorry, that we're doing right now is actually YouTube radio show. And this is a topic I really like to talk about, because part of the reason why I'm even sitting here is because it's really hard for the average person to find the information about candidates and the local issues for the local elections. And so, uh, your radio show where you guys are sitting here talking to the public every week, it's like a direct form of communication.
Yes, they can call us in any time.
Right, exactly. So then, what types of things have you guys learned since you started doing this show?
Well, people are shy to call in. They don't like to call.
Yeah.
But we do.
But they are listening.
They are listening, and...
Yeah, you guys get a lot of views when I see it online on the Facebook feed or whatever, yeah.
They are listening. We get people call us afterwards and talk to us. They just don't like to talk on the radio too much. Some people are shy, but it's a way for us to get out, and I wanted people to call in just to talk about Millville, the good and bad, or whatever you like. You know, they talk about it on Facebook, talk about it with us. But the reason I picked Dave as my candidate to run is that he has a wide range of knowledge in so many different fields. He might be a little shy talking on radios and stuff, but he is good at fixing problems and stuff. And Dave actually helped several campaigns and different candidates running, helped manage them. Dave also, I don't know if he told you, he's also had a business of manufacturing products out of a pole barn that he had for quite a long time. He made an extensive amount of money with those products, and he had a marketing guy that marketed these products. And one was a box that went for a deer...
Yeah, deer calling box.
Explain your product, I'll tell it.
Yeah, it was a deer collar. You know, Dix, if you go to Dix, they have them in there. You were making them.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah, making the boxes for them.
Right. So that was a successful venture for you.
Yes, it was.
Cool.
Got to be too much.
I know maybe not everybody calls in and talks all the time, but what would you say are the top three things that people have been talking about?
I heard the thing about, um, they didn't like, they brought it up to us, and when he was there too, that motorcycles going through or a street on one wheel.
Yeah.
Making wheelies, yeah, ATVs, yes. But they're, as you know, they're controlled, but the law is controlled by the state with that.
Yep.
So the police officers can't do anything.
Yeah, they can't chase them.
Their hands are tied.
Well, I mean, not that I'm supposed to be giving you ideas, but my idea with that is to have somebody advocate against it more regularly, whether it's sending somebody to Trenton or whatever, and I'm sure somebody out there who's already doing this has probably already tried. So, but I don't, I don't know that for sure. But if there's one thing I've learned by getting involved over the past two years is very often the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Yes, it does.
And so perhaps some more advocacy on our behalf, because I think other parts of the state don't have the same problem like we do around here, because it's such...
We got wooded areas around here.
Right. There's so much opportunity for people to have those type of vehicles, but, you know, I'm not an expert on it, so.
Yeah, the issue lies with the New Jersey Attorney General. You know, up there in Trenton, they just don't wanna, want the officers to pursue, and if officers do, and the city does allow them, or it's a...
I wonder if we can get, you know, get with other municipalities and get ahold of them and kind of come up with a petition from other municipalities.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing I'm thinking of.
That might be something we could do if we get in. Because I actually was thinking about going to Trenton with Dave.
Right, I'd do that.
Talking with Senator Tesla and other candidates who are running now, and maybe if they win, if they don't, we'll talk to the ones that won.
Yeah, we can get with Vine, get with all the other municipalities, see if they can get them to come in with us.
Other issues we had...
You get enough of them doing it. I would think they pull right through with it.
Other issues we had were like people talking about the homeless all over sleeping on benches and stuff. I do dash a little down at night and see quite a few of them sleeping on benches, yeah. And that's an issue. That is an issue on a lot of people's minds. They just don't like to see the homeless. They don't feel safe with the homeless. They don't feel safe for panhandlers. They go up to vehicles at McDonald's and Wendy's late at night, and they are knocking on their windows and asking for money while they're there. And that kind of stuff.
All right, well then, let's move on to the economic development type stuff. So it's no secret that Millville could use some more attention with economic development, not just for jobs, but for ratables and all that kind of stuff. Can you give your take on that general topic?
I know there's one that a lot of people don't like to talk about, a drag strip, and like an eighth mile drag strip up at the road thing. But if your city needs money and you were trying to bring more people in for businesses...
What do you mean by a drag strip?
Something like Echo.
Echo, which is closed now. They closed it up, but something at a shorter length.
An extension on the motorsports park kind of thing, or a different location, or...
It was talked about years ago, and it was turned down because they said noise. Have you ever lived there? I live out on Buck Street Road.
Yeah.
I can tell you right now, every motorcycle goes down there, car, and where they have, I'm crossing the lake. So if they do boat races out there, it's the same. It's got noise just the same as that.
Oh, so you're saying there's noise all the time?
Yeah, I know, I lived there.
That's one of his ideas he wants to, he was thinking about. But we were looking into a Community Relations Committee and inviting the public to come in, and I'd like to do it once a week, and Dave would be there. And, you know, if this is an issue that he liked to push forward, he would converse with the population that would come to the meeting and get their idea, and, you know, if they like it or not, how, if we do like it, how will we move forward so it doesn't bother anybody? I mean, that's something he, I'm not looking, I don't think he is either to push it right out there right away, but we're looking to get the public information on it, because if we don't find up some type of revenue somewhere along this line, we are gonna continually tax the taxpayers, they're going to. And it doesn't matter this Commission, or the last Commission, or 20 Commissions from now. We have to find some type of resolution and able to bring in corporate revenue.
Yeah, I mean, the company I work for is expanding out on 10th Street. They're putting in like a medieval style division. You'll see their ad on, if you ever go down by 10th Street, you can see where they're adding on to that. They got that already started.
Uh, any other ideas for the economic development?
Economic, what else was there that I can think of? Yeah, I had, I mean, just, see, I mean, make it appealing, I guess with clean streets and less crime was gonna make it appealing for more economic development.
Oh, okay, so you're saying you wanna attract more business investors by cleaning up the streets first?
Right, the streets, the crime, and the homeless. But we gotta find out what the problem is with the homeless, and that's what I was in the middle of doing. I was looking all this up on the web. I have paperwork for it, but I don't have it here with me, but yeah, looking to see what their areas, or what their specialties is at one of these places, but I know they work together.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, but the best part is Dave's wife works at Bridgeton Hospital and supervises in RN at these areas where the mental illness clinic. So I'm sure he was trying to reach out so that they could possibly, if he does get elected, have these entities come in and help vent through the homeless, because each is a case-by-case scenario with each person.
Okay, cool. And then during our correspondence, you mentioned wanting safe places and programs for kids?
Yes, swimming pool and a basketball court thing set up, and also to get a grant to get, of course, a lifeguard for that, for that area, and, because I'm pretty sure the pool, at least if they're at the pool area in that area, it's giving them something to do. They don't have to look for anything else to do. I mean, or getting in trouble or anything. I mean, but this will keep them from that, you know?
There's something like we used to have years ago with Union Lake. I was a part-time officer. I would patrol that. They would have it open. They'd have four lifeguards, and they had the basketball courts and the barbecue courts. And a lot of people came out and enjoyed that. For some reason, they said that the fishing game said it was bad because of geese going to the bathroom all over and stuff. But the issue is, the geese were going to the bathroom then, and then you have the sailing club that's out at Union Lake, they are going in the same water and bathing, you know, swimming, and they're still in their sailboats, and everybody's fishing from there into the lake. It's all, my personal opinion, it's because there's no, they don't have the revenue or don't want to use the revenue to sponsor that, which would help keep the kids off, because you do have to pay for four lifeguards. You do have to have the insurance for in case somebody drowns, and you do have to have the police officer there.
Yeah, that's what I was about to ask, was how do you fund it all? Like a community pool sounds nice. But oftentimes, the conversation comes up, how do you actually do it?
They're using, just when I was even in office, that it was because of biohazard with the geese. And it's like, come out and tell me the truth. You don't have the funding, or do you? You just don't want to spend it? Because that would help a lot during the summer with a lot of crime issues and stuff for the kids doing mischief. And it did help out. When I was doing, like I said, I sat there almost seven days a week during the summers back in when I was doing patrol in '09, '10, and it kept the kids off. It kept them out of trouble. They played basketball. Cops came in, messed around with them with basketball and stuff, and got them to know police officers are good guys, not the bad guys. And, you know, it worked out pretty good. I think there's a way to do that, and I think the school system could probably help too, because you're talking about a system that after the 68 million that comes when I was there in '22, 68 million comes from the state, and then the rest of it comes from grants and other sources of tax dollars, adds up to 92 and a half million. So I'm sure there's somewhere along the line they could, because at one time, the school system funded the police officer at the library when the city couldn't.
And so do you agree with most of what Rob's saying?
Yes, mm-hmm. And as far as getting a permanent grant writer instead of...
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, that topic has come up both during the election season and at City Hall meetings. So the idea is that grant writing can be an involved, complicated process.
That's why you hire somebody for that, and they get more to make their money up for the money that they get you.
Okay, so you're saying that you would be in favor of hiring a full-time grant writer as an investment, because it'll pay for itself and more?
One that's got them, right? They can do, and I understand they do pretty well with that.
Right. And so, yeah.
You did mention too, Dave, I think you forgot, share servicing?
Yeah.
And then, let's see, oh, okay, so a lot of people are talking about how City Hall is sometimes contentious. There tends to be some arguing and bickering back and forth. So then, how would you approach making sure that if you get elected, tensions stay low and the board works together?
Um, I mean, as far as them working together, I would think they're all looking for the same thing. Looking for the better of Millville. And they get out of hand, I guess. I mean, you really had closed, a closed meeting before that, right? So I think you were bringing up going, you don't want the public there, you guys argue out there.
Right.
And it makes them turn away and walk away from it, to me. That's all your difference before that. And when you go out to the public meeting, you know what you're doing.
Handle your stuff in private and present a unified front.
You wouldn't argue with your wife in front of the public, would you?
Maybe my wife would argue with me, my non-existent wife, probably because of that very reason. Anyway. But yeah, generally speaking, it's better to handle your stuff in private than to air out dirty laundry publicly.
Yes, it worked out.
Mm-hmm. And then, what else are you thinking about doing should you get elected?
If I get elected, we know the crime thing. Um, I would like to, let's just see here, I mean, just have things out on Main Street of Millville, have a, how would you call that? Night Out? Remember how they, certain towns do that?
National Night Out.
They canceled it this past year, right?
Um, we didn't have one this year.
Right.
Because if you ever noticed during Christmas parades, car shows, brings a lot of people out, the business drive from that, I would think that would work really well. We did more then.
Sure.
I mean, as you know, some, they used to be, what was it, Third Friday they had?
Um, yes, they had Third Friday.
Third Friday, and I think...
Now, there's a Fourth Friday.
Right. And I don't know if they allow you to have more than one of them a month, but I think the more of them you had, the better business will do.
Cool. So then, let's just bring up some random issues that are well-known in the city and the county. You're aware of the Nab Ave Extension Project?
No, I can't say.
Okay, so basically, Nab Avenue is a road coming off of Route 55 that goes from like the Sherman Avenue exit, and then once you get up to this road, Nab Ave, you turn left, and then you hit some farms. But if you were to extend that road, it would go all the way out to the industrial park.
Oh, okay.
And that's one of the big projects in the county, and the city's involved with it, to help boost economic development, because the trucks would have a much more direct route. Now, some people, when I was at the meeting over at the 4H area, they were complaining that they didn't want it to go through, because they moved to this area for the rural feel. But then on the other side of it, many people say, we need ratables, we need ratables, we need ratables. And so, I'm just wondering, just by your hearing of that, what your general take on it would be?
Yes, I mean, definitely, I mean, because you've seen, seen yourself when trucks get these corners and they can't make the corners, they take out the light posts, and I've seen that physically happen.
Center City Mobile.
I almost had one fall on me.
Oh, yeah.
I was real close.
I have to back up my car on a regular basis.
The guy hit it, and it fell, the light fell, just missed my left car.
Right.
Yeah, so we're actually...
So just in terms of city congestion, you would be in favor to keep those trucks out of Center City Mobile?
Yep. Because you take the one up by City Hall there. I mean, you know how sharp that is for turning that road?
Yeah.
Would you want to pull a long trailer behind you?
No, of course not. I guess the main problem right now, from my understanding, is getting all the funding for it.
Same thing. A good grant writer can probably handle that.
Maybe a grant writer is full-time, looking at all the different possibilities. Maybe that's a solution.
I would think that would work, yeah.
Okay. And then, it's fairly well-talked about that getting more police officers is not only suggested, I think, what are we at, like something like 65 officers or 70?
Yeah, it was like 72 or something.
And then one person said the state recommendation is 85, but then another candidate said we really need to be closer to 100. So how many do you think might we need, and how would we get the funding to get them?
I would think about 100 of them, at least, like what the guy said. I mean, depends what your crime rate is and conditions are, or you place them at your times, what is it, the summer months were worst? Summer months, and usually what, Friday and Saturday night is our top nights, you would say?
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, Friday and Saturday nights, and move a lot of them that we can to that. I don't know what the county Sheriff's Department charges, I mean, charges the city. Do they charge it?
Yeah, I don't know how much.
Right.
There's supposed to be a certain amount at one time, but they could give the city for nothing. And then there is a, they have to pay, sort of like a sheriff's service type of agreement. So... So, um, yeah, they would have to pay for that. They're already, do have some of the sheriffs already in town. Um, especially on the weekends, they'll have them, but, um.
But to fill the gap, I think they are doing that right now by what we discussed. Yeah, they were already doing that now, but is, is it at the hundred mark?
No, the police department's at the hundred, but.
I mean, including that, if the state police doing that.
No, 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 cause they, uh, when I understand it, the sheriffs were just doing the traffic stops and just routine patrol.
Okay, yeah, um.
And then, um, also, I was about to coordinate this Arts District Candidates Forum by, uh, just walking around High Street.
Mm-hmm.
They have some concerns and one of the most succinct ways that it's been, uh, posed to me as a question is with all of the investment that was done in the Arts District years ago, it feels as though the Arts District original people have been left out to flounder.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what kind of ideas would you have to?
Phone call.
Oh, all right, I guess we got a phone call.
Uh, you're on the air.
Hey, fellas, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm listening, I've been listening, I've been listening to Ben and I've been listening to this program. And, um, I spoke with a few other commissioners in this, uh, term as far as getting elected. And you just mentioned something about officers on the beat and, uh, and the numbers were, um, you know, I've been here since sixty, sixty-six, I guess?
Yeah.
When there was maybe twenty officers. And anybody ever followed the census and noticed that our population really hasn't grown that much in Millville? For all these extra benefits and these fifty, sixty thousand dollar jobs being added? When, um, ten-year census is between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, Millville went down nine-hundred-and-thirties people. Now, from twenty-twenty to twenty-thirty, that's the next census, ten years gap is what they do. We're only up to twenty-seven thousand some people. How do you give out this large amount of money when you gotta add this benefit package which would accumulate to a hundred thousand dollars per each individual who I heard was twenty-seven-three Millville employees now that are on the payroll? Um, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling to me, so.
Yeah.
Could you please just think about that one, one issue because I know you're running out of time?
Yeah, cause it's, well, it's because, yeah, I know, you're saying what you're talking about with the tax being, being raised and stuff. That's why we're trying to get the revenue in here from factories, cause it's, it's been a struggling issue to, um, pay for.
Yeah, because you hear, did you hear what Ben said about giving, uh, thirty-year, um, abatements? Like everything was an abatement for many, many years, abatements and the chief outcome and they don't hire nobody. They come from the north down here in sixty-five, they won't hire anybody from Duran that worked for Duran because they got an agreement with Duran.
I know, every year.
I made a whole history of everything going on in this county and in the city.
Even a racecar.
And they throw money at stuff or give people fifty thousand dollars to upgrade their house or, or their bu, business or down High Street or Wheaton, the old Wheaton deal. They didn't get any of that money back. Who paid for that? Come right out of tax dollars. You're talking about general funds, being put money into general funds to be able to pay for shirts for the department people and things like that? Or to buy the captain a Tahoe instead of driving around in a regular car just for appearance reasons? I mean, come on, people.
Yeah, I, I.
Us folks out here that are senior citizens cannot continue to be filth, we're on fixed incomes, folks. All right, I'm gonna let you go because I don't wanna take up all your time.
That's all right.
All right, thanks, thanks, boy, take it easy.
All right, well, yeah, that was a point very well taken.
I think we have another phone call?
Uh, no, 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 he, we've got about a minute left.
Okay, yeah, this, um, i- it's, we have to bring in, i- in order to bring more officers and, and, and to fund what we already have out there, we have to bring some type of revenue within here. Um, the abatements, I think, I believe he said that it was spoke about when Mayor Rominick was on, abatements.
Rominick was saying like a thirty-year plan.
And I voted against the racecar track wanted an abatement when, when I was there in twenty-two. I voted against that because I felt that it's time that they start paying into the community. Um, it was brought to my attention, oh, they've done this, this type of program, this type of program. But I, I really never saw what programs they were.
Yeah.
But it's something that, you know, we could touch on next, next week with this, cause we're running out of time.
Right. So, yeah, why don't you close down the show? It's your show.
Folks, we'll discuss what the gentleman had brought up next week, since we're running out of time here. Sir, I'd like to thank you for calling in. I greatly appreciate that. Um, and ladies and gentlemen, please tune in next week about Talk Around Millville. Um, we'd greatly like to have you call in and give your concerns as well. And if the gentleman is on next week, please call us back. We definitely would love to talk to you. Thanks, take care, bye.
Bye.
Hi, I'm Bill Von Soskow from The Racing Line on WVLT ninety-two point one FM every Tuesday night, seven PM to eight PM.
We'll take your calls, so listen in Tuesday night at seven PM, The Racing Line on WVLT ninety-two point one, The Cruisin' Good Guys.